We will now begin the City of Boynton Beach City Commissioners Meeting today, Thursday, September 6, 2018. Would everyone please rise for invocation by Doug Harms from the Church of Latter-day Saints, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Commissioner Katz.
Our dear Heavenly Father, we are indeed grateful for the opportunity we have to be in attendance at this City Commission meeting tonight. We're grateful for the new building that we are able to meet in, and we pray for Thy Spirit to be here in attendance with us tonight. We ask that You'll bless the leadership of our community, our mayor, our vice mayor, and all the commissioners. We ask that You'll bless the citizens of Boynton Beach with health and abundance, and we pray for these things humbly in the name of Thy Son Jesus Christ. Amen.
(Inaudible) United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Wally? Do you have the... And we got Doug. Did he just run out? So we have a certificate for Doug with the Church of Latter-day Saints for their help with our Wilbright Memorial Cemetery.
Mayor Stephen B. Grant?
Here.
Vice Mayor Christina Romulus?
Present.
Commissioner Justin Katz?
Here.
Commissioner Mac McCray?
Here.
And Commissioner Joe Casella?
Here.
All present, Mayor.
Is there any additions, deletions, or corrections to the agenda?
Mayor, I have one if you would please add to Section 12 Legal, a new G, approval of Exhibit B to the school security agreement that the commission has already approved. We have an additional exhibit.
Is there anything else from the commission saying none? May I have a motion to approve the amended agenda? A move.
Second.
All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously. First order of business, we'll be conducting the first public budget hearing for fiscal year 2018-2019, proposed millage and tentative annual operating budget.
Mayor Stephen, before we start?
Yes.
I don't like to complain, but something is wrong with these lights. I...
Mark?
Yes, ma'am.
Do you want to open those blinds? I think we shut them because of the glare, but maybe that'd give you more natural light.
I'm 69, and I'm almost 69, and I cannot see. I'm sorry.
That's it?
I can get through tonight.
Make it brighter.
I'll get through tonight. I can't even see Tim.
Can't?
No. Hi, Tim.
All right. Mayor and Commissioners, Tim Howard, Assistant City Manager. So tonight is your first public hearing on your budget for fiscal year 2018-2019. There's a PowerPoint on the screen. There's some copies at the front door for anybody in the public that wishes to grab one so they can see it, and hopefully they'll be able to see the screens around the room. We'll go through the PowerPoint. Everybody saw it in July. It's a little modified from the July PowerPoint, but basically the same. We've had a couple changes since then, and I'll go through those when we get to them. So tonight is your first public hearing for the proposed millage rate and the tentative budget. What happens is we ask you to adopt a proposed millage rate and the tentative budget tonight. Tuesday on September 11th at 6:00 p.m., there's a special commission meeting at 6 o'clock prior to your CRA board meeting to adopt the final fire assessment rate resolution. And then on Thursday, September 20th, we have... You moved your commission meeting that week to Thursday, the 20th, and that will also be your second and second public hearing on the budget and your final millage rate adoption and your final budget adoption.
I have a question.
Uh-huh.
I need to know, is this where we're going to be presented with the increase in solid waste?
That'll be later on your agenda tonight.
Okay. What item?
It's under... It's the second reading of an ordinance.
12F.
12F. Yep. So the purpose of the hearing tonight is to review and discuss the fiscal year 2018-2019 tentative budget that we've submitted for you. The total for all funds in the city is $235 million. 91.1 is for the general fund, which represents about 39% of the overall funds that you'll be approving. Provide an opportunity for comments on it. In the end, we'll ask you to adopt a proposed millage rate and a tentative budget. So the budget revisions that have occurred since July to the budget that you saw in July to now are very minor, and they all have to do with the capital funds. I'll skip to... I'm going to go skip around, but in the utility CIP, we needed to add the construction cost of the district energy plant because we didn't add it, and we received the bond in this fiscal year, but the construction costs are going to be next fiscal year, and so we had to add a project for that. So that increased it from $28.4 to $35.5 million for the utility CIP. In the two general, what we call general CIP, one is general government CIP, and the other one is the local government surtax CIP. In the local government surtax, we had a project that should have been in 2018. We inadvertently put it in the 1920 year for $300,000, so we needed to move that back into 2018 because it was connected with a few other projects that we were going to do, so it had to be in this upcoming year. So that changed the CIP from $9.7 million to $10 million. The general CIP increased from $1.5 million to $7.9 million. That has to do with a couple minor projects that we moved around. They were very small, but the major increase is to budget the remaining construction for the high school rehabilitation. Again, the funding we're receiving in this year, the construction, the rest of the construction cost, which totaled about $6.4 million our next fiscal year, and we needed to add that project into the government CIP. This slide is a summary of all the funds that are going to be... Have budgets adopted for next year. Starts off with the general fund at 91.1. It runs through your enterprise, which is water and sewer, solid waste, golf course, your internal service, all the way down to your debt service at 10.2, and this totals the $235 million that I mentioned on the first slide for your overall citywide budget. The next two are two pie charts that you see most times every year, which segregate the funding for the $235 million. The four major sources are utility fees, which fund the utility water and sewer fund, property taxes for the general fund, capital and bond sources, which fund your CIP, both utility and general, and then transfers between funds come in at $15.9 million. The next one is on the expenditure side. Again, it just shows you by fund. 91.1 is general fund, which represents about 39% of the overall water and sewer. 48.7, which represents about 20.7%. Your capital funds represent about 23%, and your solid waste is about 4.7. There are some smaller ones on the chart, golf course, self-insurance, and all other funds, which the all other funds can be your public art, your special revenue, and your debt service. The next couple slides are specifically to the general fund itself. The proposed millage rate that you have in front of you is 7.9 mils, which is the current millage rate this year. We're not requesting any increase in that. So the property tax levy at 7.9 mils will generate about $36.3 net property taxes. When we say net, that's after the TIF money is sent to the CRA. We collect all the gross property taxes, and then we send over the TIF money to the CRA. So the $36.3 is the net taxes that the city gets in its general fund. The other segments of the pie are fund transfers, intergovernmental, charges for services. Charges for services are like your police contracts, your fire service contracts, that we provide services outside the city to other agencies, and we collect money for them. The fire assessment is $6.5 million. Franchise taxes that we receive, licenses of permits, fines, interest, and your proposed budget in front of you does not require any fund balance to be used to balance this budget. This slide is just a slide of the general fund, just by type of service and percent in cost. You can look down the side. It's police, fire, public works, general government, development, recreation, library, ITS, finance, and human resources. This slide... The next two slides will show you your general fund by department. It'll show you what the amended budget is for this year, what the proposed budget is for 2018, dollar amount change from one year to the next, and then the percent change from last year to this year. That was very similar. It totals the 91.1. Just a note at the bottom that when we started this internally, as far as budget review for departments, the budget request came in at about $93 million, and through the city manager and staff review, we reduced that proposed budget to $91.1 million. This slide is your proposed tax levy compared to your rollback rate. Your rollback tax levy would be the amount that you would levy based on the current property value to generate the same dollar amount of taxes that you received from last year. So in the event where your property values go up, your rollback rate, which is your millage rate, would go down to generate the same amount, and conversely, it would work the other way. In our case, our values went up about 5... 6%. So our 7.9 generates the $36 million. If you did the rollback rate to generate the same dollar amount from last year, you would set a millage rate of 7.4863. There's no increase in millage rate. There is an increase in tax rate, which we will put in an advertisement that's required by Florida statute. On this slide also shows you that the current year assessed value by the property appraiser is $5.7 billion. If you look very small at the bottom, we made a note that the last year's taxable value was 5.4, so we did enjoy an increase in property values for this upcoming year. So the truth and millage statement that's required by the Florida statute is that our proposed tax rate is 7.9. There's no rate increase from the current 7.9, but there's an actual tax increase of 5.53%, which is the amount over the rollback rate of 7.4863. And this slide tells you that there's an average increase in property values of 6.5% citywide. That means some property values went up more than that, and some went up less than And with that, that's the overview of the budget. Like I said, nothing really changed other than the capital from the July, and it was mainly the two large construction projects that we're going to have going on with the central energy plant and the high school. So with that, if you have any questions?
Thank you. Tim, that 6% increase, is that a general, like for Palm Beach County, 6% is on the average as far as the increase in property?
The average of the county was... I'm not sure. I think it was a little lower than 5.8, 5.9. We enjoyed a little higher than average, so we did very well.
That's good.
Any other questions from the commission? Any other questions from the audience regarding public budget for next year? I'm sorry.
Herb Suss, 1711 Woodfield, Boynton Beach. You know, every year I get up on a budget. This year, more than ever, with all expenses, with all the building and unforeseen situations coming up, especially building, and the city growing, people coming in, more services, 7.9. I don't think the commission's doing their job. It's got to be at least eight. You know, you're laughing. You're laughing, but you need a contingency fund. You need, besides having one, 8.8. That's what it's got to be. I hope it's not too late because I think you're not looking forward ahead. I know you're trying to keep everything the same for the people, and it ain't going to work. You're going to run into a problem. 7.9 to 8, that's what it should be. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Herb. Tim, what is the current reserve fund? I know that we need at least 10% of the general fund.
Right. So we ended last year at 9:30, 2017, with a fund balance in the general fund of $16.3 million. Your reserve... Emergency reserve policy that's set by resolution is 10% of the upcoming budget, proposed budget. In this case, it would be $9.1 million of your general fund because your general fund proposes $91 million. So of that $16.3, $9.1 would be set aside as emergency reserve, which leaves a undesigned balance of $7.2 million.
Right. Thank you very much.
Tim, what is a one-tenth of a mil raise in our military rates? How much would that generate?
One-tenth of a mil would generate approximately $450,000, $457,000, $460,000. I'm not exactly sure, but it's around $450.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Dr. Stephanie Hayden, ODMO 2181 Southwest, 15th Avenue, condo N102, Boynton Beach, Florida 33426. My quick question or clarification is I noticed that the general fund, most of the fund is going towards police and fire budgets. What exactly does those budgets pertain to or entail? Like life insurance policies? Is that just to manage those municipalities?
We have over 215 employees in the police and over 125 in the fire. The main thing that we do as a city is we provide services, and so that is the reason why they're the highest is because they're the ones providing the services for the city to keep us safe and secure. And so we can go into detail on the line items if you're requesting that sort of information later on, but that is the reason why it is the highest.
All right. Thank you. So on the line item, we're going to go through that.
You can request that, yes.
Okay. Thank you. Who do I ask for that?
I believe any sort of public request would go through our city clerk.
Okay. Thank you.
Just a quick answer. The proposed budget is online.
Oh, is it?
Available online on our website, so you can go through under the general fund and under the individual departments, and it'll show you line item like operating supplies, life insurance, salaries.
Okay.
If you want to look at that.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Thank you.
Before you leave, I need to get some clarification. I'm just saying because you say that to take care of the municipalities, we have departments here within the city. The city of Boynton itself is a municipality.
I understand that. I just wanted to know, is there a place that goes through what is that $31 million? $31.1 and $24 million? What does it break down to? That's all I'm asking for clarification.
Right, right. It breaks down, but they're departments, they're not municipalities.
All right. Thank you. I know the city is a municipality. Appreciate it.
Dr. Blas, 113 Tara Lakes Drive, Boynton Beach, Florida 33436. I just want to say the budget work seems exemplary, very professional. I'm good with numbers, and you guys did a fantastic job, and I think the city needs to go on this way. But I have to say that I represent for the future a tendency to reduce taxes in Boynton Beach and to rely on public-private partnerships to provide some of the income. So this is not to question your work. We have no choice but to go forward, but I think I would put everybody on notice that there is a plan to reduce taxes here. Thank you.
See no more further public comments?
So Mayor, at this time, there's two resolutions in front of you that I believe Jim has. The first one will be your proposed millage rate, and the second one will be your tentative budget.
Jim?
All right. The first is Resolution 1811A, a resolution of the City of Boynton Beach, Florida, adopting a proposed millage rate for the city's general operating fund for fiscal year beginning October 1, 2018, and ending September 30, 2019, announcing the percentage. If any, the proposed millage rate exceeds the rollback rate, announcing the date, time, and place of the second and final public hearing on the budget, and the millage rate, providing for severability conflict, and providing an effective date. The millage rate stated within the body of the resolution is 7.9000. The proposed millage rate is 5.53% above the computed rollback rate, and the second and final public hearing will be held September 20, 2018, at 6:30 p.m. here in these chambers.
All right. May I have a motion to approve?
Second.
All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Resolution R18119, a resolution of the City of Boynton Beach, Florida, adopting a tentative budget for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2018, and ending September 30, 2019, providing for severability conflict and an effective date.
May I have a motion to approve?
Second with discussion?
Sure.
Just a quick question, Jim. On it, it's a tentative budget. That means with the second reading, we can... There might be some items that we'd be able to move some monies around, depending? Yes, Commissioner. Okay. Thank you.
See no further discussion. All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Next item is informational items by members of the city commission. I'm going to go first. On August 22, I attended the Palm Beach County League of City and had a meeting with Mark Heffron. On the 23rd, I attended the Quiet Zone with Hoover the Hound. The 24th, I was at the commencement for Boynton Beach's International College of Health Science. On the 25th, I went to the Celebration of Life for Phil Oxendine. On the 27th, that morning, I went to the Palm Beach County Housing Authority to give them an update. I have not heard back from them regarding what they are doing with their properties in Boynton Beach. I was there at the meeting for the South Central Regional Waste Water Treatment Board. On the 28th, I attended the Transportation Planning Agency Steering Committee for Becoming Independent, and then I went to leadership Palm Beach County, their luncheon learn to learn about reentry programs. On the 30th, I went to the Boys and Girls Club of Del Ray. Then I had a great Labor Day weekend. I went to the Race to Equity Summit for my brother's keeper. And today, I went to see Mac Bernard for the District Seven Mayor's meeting. I attended the literacy luncheon and had a sheriff's meeting. Vice Mayor, I'm going to pass the gavel to you and let you finish the informational items.
Up and continue with you, Commissioner Casella.
All right. Nothing to disclose, but I also attended the memorial service for Phil Oxendine, Rule Number 55. And being a firefighter myself, it was a tremendous send-off. I've been to way too many of those, and it just pays tribute to what he was and what he stood for, and I think it gave the family great solace to know that he was that well-respected and what kind of man he was away from home. So I was very proud to attend that and very proud of the Boynton firefighters putting on that memorial service.
McCray?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. First of all, I'd like to say that I attended the Fourth Sunday in August. I went with Chief Gregory to Boynton Hill Church of God in Christ for their 41st Men Day celebration. That was a plus for me. The second one is that I have no disclosures, but I'd like to say to staff, and Lori, I want you kind of to follow along with what I'm going to say tonight, you know, so if anybody have any problems, you can, you know, see me. First of all, John Dustin Poole. I was over there Saturday, and I looked at those umbrellas, and they was all raggedy and torn, flopping down. There was an eyesore. I felt real, real bad. It's in district two, but it represents this city. I spoke to Mr. Majors about replacing those umbrellas, Lori, and he told me that we have to wait till the new budget. I find that unacceptable when there's umbrellas and we have money in the parks and recreation where we could replace umbrellas, and we do not need to wait till October 1 for something to kick in. I don't like that, and I'm going to go ahead and be honest with you. John Dustin Poole, it needs painting. Carolyn Samson Center, it needs painting. We all talking about, you know, Town Square Project. I'm just as hyped up as everybody else about Town Square Project, but I think we need to keep up with what we already have. Lori, I'm going to say this one to you as well, and also to Colin, and also to Tim, Assistant City Managers. I went over to customer service Tuesday to pay my water bill. We had citizens standing out in the rain trying to get in. I was one of those citizens. I made a phone call to Lori. They had two cashiers. That was unacceptable. We had a slot for three. Made a phone call. We finally got three up there. And my take is that, you know, when we tell citizens that, you know, this is temporary, and the citizens that was there, they was yelling at me, screaming at me, and said this is unacceptable, and I agree with them. So what I'm going to request is that if we have temporary spots where we have people housed, we need to go and see if these temporary spots and locations, are they really working? And if not working, then find out what can we do to help them work? I'm just saying. We've already displaced the employees, now we're displacing citizens in regards of paying bills, and they are unacceptable. Get a report from your supervisors. Find out what's going on. What can you do better? I'm just saying, you know, it's better enough. We got to go and pay money, then we got to stand in line, and I got to stand in line and hear people yelling at me, talking about it's better in Del Ray, and this is unacceptable. I really feel real, real bad. We need to check on when we have people to move, and, you know, and even with the library. I see Greg back there. The air conditioning wasn't working. I'm just saying, you know, if you all can get us a report, if nobody else don't want one, I want one. Tell me what is happening to the buildings that we have people housed in temporarily, where we can make it better for the citizens of Boynton who's paying bills, better for the employees. I'm just saying, let them know that they could come to you all and say, you know, we have some issues. We don't know if we have issues if nobody speaks up, but I'm speaking up tonight about customer service. We do have issues.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Commissioner Katz?
Nothing to report.
Okay. I only have one disclosure. I met with Bradley Miller regarding future projects coming before the city commission. Moving on to announcements, community, special events, and presentations, we will be announcing some special meetings continuing in addition to today for the month of September. We'll have a special commission meeting on Tuesday, September 11, 2018, at 6:00 p.m. prior to our CRA meeting to consider the final fire assessment rate resolution. It'll be also here in the Intercoastal Park Clubhouse. Also, Thursday, September 20, will be our second regular city commission meeting to include the final millage adoption and also the final public hearing for the fiscal year 2018-2019 budget. Other announcement we will be announcing today is... I'm sorry. Announcing the 9/11 Remembrance Memorial Ceremony to be held on Tuesday, September 11, 2018, at Veterans Memorial Park at 411 North Federal Highway at 9:30 a.m. Is there anyone to speak about that?
Vice Mayor, I do have one correction. We've since revised, and we are going to start that ceremony at 9:00 a.m. Instead of 9:30, we had a change after the agenda had been published.
Okay. So that meeting... Sorry. That memorial ceremony will be held at 9:00 a.m. at Veterans Memorial Park. Now moving on to public audience. Individual speakers will be limited to three-minute presentations before the city commission, and this will be in regard to items not on the agenda. You may come up if you have any comments. And everybody all at once.
We'll start the clock.
We're wasting time, gentlemen. Please.
Please, let's move along.
Flip a coin.
Please come up to the podium if you'd like to say something. Yes, you may approach.
It is more than 10 minutes?
Have three minutes, sir. You can give your name and your address, and you can speak regarding what you need to speak about for three minutes. If you need to speak to us further than that, then you can send an email. Then you can send an email to us, and we can meet with you or speak with you on the phone individually if you don't have enough time here.
Okay. My name is Renee Blank. Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, City of Boynton. My name is Renee Blank. I'm a civilian engineer and a minister. The reason I'm here today because God has chosen Moses the stardust to free his people in Israel. Today again, God has chosen the smallest of his events with no language, no money, from a small country in the size of a dart to raise voice on climate change in order for no one to take the glory that belongs to God alone. The diversity of language is the greatest flame of life by wanting to monopolize the glory that belongs to God. The sin of presumption originating from the Bebo Tower as a scald face that is climate change. Today, we are returning at the same initial point, which requires again a unique language to cross the river and a Moses spiritual strategy to open the Red Sea. When we all understand, we will find our way. Climate change is not only a global phenomenon, but everything is connected together. We all are. Before climate change, there is no Republican, no Democrat, no Democrat. Before climate change, there is no Republican, no Democrat, no Jew, no Moslem, no Catholics, no Protestant. Climate change has no discrimination and leave no room for racism, neither for division. Being human is still of human without regard to the colors. A racist cannot be a believer, a believer cannot be a racist. The justice was a black Jew. We all should work together to reach again the primitive unity that confess climate change. Everything was created for men. Every change that we take necessary is for the climate. The climate is full in the atmosphere, and the changes all the time in all the space. Building strong communities is synonym of building demand. Every project should meet the requirement of the global plan of rebuilding demand. If the development conform the bottom, divine mercy conform the above. There is no place in the nature where we can go to destiny and correct the environment except in the one body. Know thyself, and you will know the universe and the gods. We are a small universe, and the universe is a big man. The destiny of men and the universe are integrated next together. The failure of men is resulting of an original cosmic failure, and the redemption of the man is inseparable to the cosmic redemption. In order for the change to be made, new men should be born. Climate change is a spiritual phenomenon, a spiritual response is imperative. The deluge of Noah resulted from a climate change. People did everything that we are doing today, they did not listen to the voice of Noah, but fortunately, we are the children of those who had goodwill. In the dialogue of God and Job.
Sir, thank you.
That's all.
You can feel free to email us the rest of your comments, and we'll take that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, Dr. Blas, 113 Tara Lake Drive, Boynton Beach, Florida, 33436. First of all, I want to join in the strong feelings of Commissioner McCray. Indeed, it's a critical time. Whether this should have been done or not is another matter. It's too late to change, but I think it is a time for particular, being particularly careful and energetic that the city continues to function beautifully. This is the best city in the country, so I join in your feelings there. A couple of things which are obviously on my mind, I am actually, I would like to inform all of you, I am a write-in candidate for governor. I still love Boynton, let's see how many votes we can get. And the agenda generally, it ties in a little bit with what was said in Boynton. We are already doing public-private partnerships. I give the mayor and the commission credit. This is a great way to, for the city to work with, within capitalism. I believe a lot more can be done in the state of Florida, and if you're interested, you can go to my Facebook, and almost daily, we propose new ideas. Another issue that I think is, we're all conscious of, is that we all want to reduce crime, the danger of crime in Boynton Beach. We have a new wonderful chief of police, and I'm sure we can get the energy to, and the resources to reduce crime almost to zero, as close to zero as possible, so that we can really enjoy our lives here. As for education and healthcare, Boynton is good, but it can be a lot better, and that will require, of course, additional resources for that to happen. By and large, I think the city is doing a fantastic job with the resources that we have. Probably the issue is how can we increase our resources? And I would say no more about it, not to be repetitive, so thank you very much.
Herb Sauce, 1711 Woodford. General Mattis stopped World War III by not having to go in and kill Assad in Syria. That would have caused World War III with Russia. He stopped Trump from taking his troops out of Korea, and that's important to keep him there because if a missile is shot by North Korea, we have 15 minutes. The other way, we would have had nothing to stop that missile. And Trump, more than ever, is out of control. He's dangerous, more so even with his fingernail on a red button. He's out of control, more so than ever. He's a danger to this republic. The Times Ed Op, the guy should have come forward. He should have definitely come forward. Whoever it is is a coward. However, however, Trump is now more dangerous because of that. And right away, there was a lot to that op end. There are people watching out for us. Trump, as I repeated in the past, committed treason by meeting Putin one-on-one in Helsinki. No ifs, ands, and buts. And another thing, the Republicans, whether you like it or not, are complicit. They are completely complicit not coming out and speaking out against this danger because we have a danger in the White House. Thank God there are people that are speaking out. If you've been watching the Kavanaugh situation with the Supreme Court judge, he should not get in. What he did, when Senator Leahy asked him about stolen Miranda emails, Kavanaugh was under oath, no ifs, ands, and buts. He committed perjury. He committed perjury. He lied because it was proven that those emails were stolen, and so he knew about it. He also refused to answer other questions. There's something about this Kavanaugh. And then for the Republicans to hold back all those documents and to give the Democrats the next morning 40,000 to look at it, come on, give me a break. What are they trying to hide? They are as complicit and as dangerous as anything else. I want to tell you something, this republic, I was called up, I went. Trump, a four or five-time during the war in Vietnam, he ducked out. That's another guy. And he criticized McCain? Huh, you gotta be kidding.
Thank you. Any further comments? Seeing none, public audience is closed, and I will pass the gavel back to the mayor.
Moving on to administrative, appoint eligible members of the community to serve in vacant positions on city advisory boards. For Arts Commission, Commissioner McCray, we have one candidate.
I don't have my sheet before me, what's the name?
Susan Oyer.
Susan Oyer, please.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Education Youth Advisory Board, Lori Wilkinson. I know she has done a lot with our barrier-free run. It seems that she missed four meetings in a row, and due to our charter, she is automatically removed as a member. She has reapplied, and along with the chair's letter of recommendation that we appoint her back, myself, I would agree, and so I would nominate Lori Wilkinson to be the alternate on the Education Youth Advisory Board.
Second.
All right, all those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. I'm sorry, do anyone oppose? No, okay, all, motion passes unanimously. Moving on to consent agenda.
Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to call item G, please.
G?
E.
G as in?
Go.
You got it. And I want to talk about item C as well. All right. Item C, approve the reduction of the performance bond by the amount of $456,368.60 for the completion of the paving rating and drainage improvements in association with the 500 Ocean One project. I just wanted to, I asked Lori if FDOT is also approved.
Yes, they actually had a separate bond with 500 Ocean, which required their right, their approving and accepting of all improvements, so they're, they're good.
And they, they, FDOT has?
Yes, it's written off on all that.
Okay, wonderful. So may I have a motion to approve item C?
Move.
All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item G, approve acceptance of a one-month extension to the interim contract for landscape maintenance contract with various landscape maintenance companies effective September 1st, 2018. Commissioner McCray?
Thank you. I'd like to ask staff, how did we get in this predicament when it came before us? You know, I thought it was already in there. What happened?
When it comes to what? I'm sorry, sir.
Okay, this one-year extension, why did we have to do a one-month extension? I'm just saying, how did we get in this predicament?
Six months ago, we, this, well, let me back up, Tim Howard, Assistant City Manager. The landscape bid for the city includes all of the medians, it includes the, some of the parks, the mulching, the cutting, things like that. So the contract expired, and we were, it's a large contract to go out to bid. So we were putting out to bid, so we did a six-month extension with all of the vendors to give us the time to process the bid. We got the bid out, we got the responses back. Staff is reviewing them, but the evaluation of this particular bid is very cumbersome. They weren't ready to come with a recommendation tonight, and the six-month ended August 31st, so we needed to give us one month to get the evaluation done and come back to the commission to award all the contracts.
Let me ask another question. Will one month be long enough?
According to staff, that's what they told me, it was to, their plan is to come on the 20th to your, to the commission for approval. I asked the same question, staff said one month.
Okay, what staff said, and I'm gonna kind of hold you on to it. Motion to approve.
If not, I'll be back here on the 20th.
I don't think so. Motion to approve.
Second.
All right. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Motion to approve the remainder of the agenda, consent agenda.
Second.
All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Bids and purchases over 100,000. Prove the purchase of vehicles as anticipated in the fleet replacement fund for fiscal year 2018, 19, and 2020, 2021 replacement cycle in the estimated amount of $1,962,019.2 from General GMC Truck Sales Orlando Freightliner and Next Train Truck Center by utilizing the Forest Sheriff's Association Contract and Container Systems Equipment Co. for nine solid waste vehicles. May I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second with questions?
Yes.
I'd like to ask staff. Okay, I understand it takes a while to build these things up, et cetera, but we, last time we did the buying of these, et cetera, we got a lot of lemons. Have anybody looked to make sure we're not getting lemons this time?
Yes, we changed the car from a Peterbilt to an auto car, so the auto cars are more reliable, so that's what we're buying this year. We have actually two that should be delivered here, hopefully within the next month or so, which are auto cars, the side-load auto cars. So we switched the style of chassis and engine.
Thank you. The rest of my comments will come on the legal F. Thank you.
All right. And before we go, I noticed that we've had two of them break down within the past 30 days for the recyclables.
Two of the older trucks?
Yeah.
Yes.
And so are we still able to make, you know, I know that sometimes we have to go the next day.
Correct. We took, received, we did receive the two new recycle trucks. The one of them is now in service, and so we took the other old one out of service. The other one, we're waiting for the decals from the tax, the tags from the DMV.
Okay.
So that one should come out as well. So, but yes, to answer your question is if, if we don't pick it up that day, we typically do it on the next day, which is the day off, on Wednesday or a Saturday.
Thank you so much.
Let's open up another question. You're waiting for the tags from DMV?
Yes, sir.
How long does that take?
Usually it takes about two to three weeks. This particular case, when we gave them a check, they cashed the check and told us we had to bring them another one because they can't refund that one or credit our account, so we had to get another check. They're a little bit difficult to deal with at times, so this particular truck is taking a little bit longer, it's about 45 days.
Well, what was the price of the check that they cashed?
Like $120.
And we had to bring them another check for what amount?
Same amount. Yeah, it's, it's a little bit outrageous, but.
I'm good, as long as we're not, we don't have problems, citizens, the city have problems as well, okay, I'm good.
All right. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Seeing none, motion passes unanimously. Moving on to item B. Award the bid for landscape maintenance services for utility sites in response to bid number 34-2821-18IT to the two top, top two ranked proposals. The first proposal from Blue Marlin Investments, doing business as KCO Landscaping in the amount of $74,780 plus an allowance for potential additional services of 5,000. And the second proposal is from Vincent Sons Landscaping in the bid amount of $160,619 plus an allowance of 10,000 for potential additional services. May I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve for discussion.
Second.
Thank you.
Somebody need to answer this for me. Between B and G, what's the correlation between these two? Because we got landscape maintenance, I just asked about landscape maintenance, and, you know.
Tim Howard, the correlation is that they're separate bids. The one that's in front of you right now is for the utility properties, which is a smaller number of properties and specific services on those properties. It was easier to review. The other one is citywide, which covers all the medians up and down, all the streets, and irrigation with it.
This is the one that covers the alleys?
The other one was.
The other one was, that cover alleys?
This is lift stations and sites where we, yeah, where we have utility infrastructure or buildings. And this is also funded, Commissioner, out of the utility fund, whereas the landscape bid on G, item G on consent, is general fund.
Correct. General fund and utility fund, they both belong to the city, right?
Right.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Separate funding sources.
Further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next, we have improve the employee group medical, dental, vision, life, long-term disability and short-term disability insurance programs for fiscal year 2018, 19, and authorize the city manager to sign required documents for the following policies per the request for proposal for group medical, dental, vision, life, long-term disability and short-term disability. Our first resolution is number 18-121. Approve and authorize the city manager to sign an agreement with United Healthcare for Cities Group Medical Insurance for the plan year October 1st, 2018 through September 30th, 2019.
Because I have a question on that one.
We gotta, I think it's because they're separate resolutions, we have to do one for each of them.
Second for discussion.
Yes.
Thank you. Lori, on this one here, does this help employees with their family coverage, anything like that, that save money? Because I hear our citizens, not citizens, I hear our employees saying that they're getting hit hard with, you know.
Help us with that. We do provide somewhat of a, a little bit of a subsidy for some of the coverage.
Explain. Thank you.
Good evening, Julie Oldberry, Director of Human Resources and Risk Management. The premiums for the medical insurance, this year, we are proposing that we provide a $112.50 per family reduction per month. And in addition to that, we are recommending that we provide a $100 per month subsidy to employees who provide coverage to dependent children. So anybody who's on an employee with children plan or a family plan would receive that subsidy. So that does help.
Thank you. I just want to know, I'm just saying, we need to let the public know that we are reducing costs. I'm just saying, you know, if I don't ask questions, nobody hear it. Okay, go ahead. Thank you.
Commissioner Casello?
Julie, all these resolutions before, these all vetted before our unions, and all people signed on board with this?
Yes, sir. In fact, John McMahon, Johnny McMahon and Sergeant Ray De Los Rios from Fire and Police were on the evaluation committee with myself, Andrea Javier, our benefits administrator, and Mara Frederickson, our director of finance.
And all were in agreement?
And all of us were in agreement.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor state so by saying aye.
Seeing no further discussion, may I, we got a motion in the second. All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes unanimously. Resolution number 18-122. Approve and authorize city managers to sign an agreement with United Healthcare for Cities Group Dental Insurance for the plan year October 1st, 2018 through September 30th, 2020.
Second, discussion?
Yes.
On this plan, are we saving the employees any money?
On this plan, we are not saving the employees money, but we are not increasing any costs.
Thank you.
All right. So, any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes unanimously. Resolution number 18-123. Approve and authorize city manager to sign an agreement with United Healthcare for Cities Group Vision Insurance for the plan year October 1st, 2018 through September 30th, 2021.
Second for discussion. Thank you. Are we going up or are we staying the same?
We are increasing slightly. For the employee-only coverage, the increase is going up seven cents per month, and for the family coverage, it's increasing by 22 cents per month.
All right. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes unanimously. Resolution number 18-124. Approve and authorize city manager to sign an agreement with Minnesota Life Insurance Company for Cities Group Life Insurance and Accidental Death and Dismemberment for the plan year October 1st, 2018 through September 30th, 2021.
Second for discussion. Is this one covered by the city or do what I have, employees have to pay into this one?
On this one, the city covers the basic life and the AD&amp;D. However, there is an option for employees to purchase at their own expense supplemental life insurance, which would provide them additional increments of insurance, and those are like rate based on their age. So, that's up to them.
Was this an increase?
This one is actually a decrease by .195 per $1,000 of life insurance.
And so, does each employee have a different level of life insurance, or is it universal throughout?
There are different classes within the coverage for, I think some of those have been negotiated. Unfortunately, I don't know them off the top of my head, but there are some minor distinctions.
Okay.
Our department and Police Department probably, you know, got more coverage than the rest of you all?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
All right. Seeing no more further discussion, all those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, seeing none, motion passes unanimously. Resolution number 18-125. Approve and authorize city manager to sign an agreement with UNUM for City Group's Long-Term Disability Insurance for the Plan Year October 1st, 2018 through September 30th, 2020. Any discussion?
Thank you. That N is a typo, okay, but did this go up?
I'm sorry, oh, did it increase?
Yes.
This one actually decreased by .051 cents per $100.
Thank you.
All right. Seeing no more further discussion, all those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes unanimously. Resolution number 18-126. Approve and authorize city manager to sign an agreement with UNUM for Cities Group Short-Term Disability Insurance for the Plan Year October 1st, 2018 through September 30th, 2020.
Second for discussion?
Yes.
What's the difference, Laurie, of whomever between short-term and long-term, how many months?
The short-term disability takes effect on the eighth day of injury or illness, whereas long-term disability would take effect on the 91st day of injury or illness.
Thank you.
All right. Seeing no more further discussion, all those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, seeing none, motion passes unanimously. We have no public hearing, no city managers' report, no unfinished business, and we're moving on to new business. Commissioner Casello requests to discuss diesel exhaust systems for the fire stations.
Thank you, Mayor. Is the chief, chief is here, chief?
I'm Joseph Fire Rescue.
Hi, chief.
Hi, Joseph.
Good. Chief, a couple of meetings ago, you had received a grant, and it was for the purpose of buying some gear drying dryers for the year and a diesel exhaust filtration system. Unbeknown to me at that time, I thought all these stations had these systems already in place. I know, I come from fire service and we had them back then. And it's installed in many of the departments, including Delray and the department you came from, Boca. And not to get into the science of diesel exhaust, but because of the small size, the diesel exhaust particles contain benzene, which can be inhaled and deeply into the lungs and even into the bloodstream, with benzene having cancer-causing properties according, and according to the National Institute of Occupational Safety and Health, the researchers have found that more than two-thirds of firefighters, 68% develop cancer compared to about 22% for general population. In 2017, it was a number-one killer of firefighters, surpassing heart disease. I know the city of Boynton Beach has rules and regulations that prohibits the use of tobacco in any form for its firefighters, and I'm guessing because they possess that same cancer-causing properties that the diesel fans do. So, I wanna, and I know that we're getting one in the new station that's gonna be built, and of course, the grant that we just received is gonna fulfill that need in Station 3, is it?
That's correct.
Okay, great. So, we have three stations that are not gonna be serviced by these systems here. And I know that there's a plan, a long-range plan down the line to do one a year in the upcoming years. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. It is my feeling here, knowing what we know about what diesel exhaust can do and how it causes cancers, and cancer is the number-one killer of firefighters, would you say that it's of great importance to get these installed in our stations ASP as quickly as possible? And it's my belief that the two stations that are gonna have these systems in, and those other three that are not. I think it's important that we do everything we can do to protect our first responders. I think everybody up here would agree with me on that. And I, and I know that you do yeoman's work in making sure your men and women are safe every day on the job. But this is definitely a health hazard, well documented. I would ask these, my fellow commissioners, that we expedite these next three exhaust systems to get them installed all in a timely manner as we have the other two stations coming online with them. And so, how are we gonna fund that? I know it's, funding is always an issue here, and that's why I had asked earlier about some of the items in our CIP budget there, if monies can be moved around. I know we got monies in there for such things as re-roofing dugouts. I know we got monies in there for purposes of doing golf course roads in a cart barn. I know we've got monies in there, hundreds of thousands dollars in there to, to do some maintenance work at the tennis club. So, I would be asking my commissioners to ask the city manager to come up with some source of funding for the additional three systems that we're eventually gonna need and to get them installed as quickly as possible. Now, with that being said, I'd like to have your feelings on this.
Well, well put question, and you have your background and information to support it. Since I've gotten, been here for the last two and a half years, we've had a very aggressive fire health and safety program, and we're expanding that every day. In the last three years, we've replaced all the bunk gear for firefighting. We've replaced all the infrared cameras to make them safe when you go into buildings. We have expedited ballistic vest program, and these are all large dollar items. They are immediate needs when we got here, and we've replaced them. We're in the process of refreshing our apparatus, and we're getting to the point where we renewed most of, into newer models to get people safer to and from the job. We've expanded our medical surveillance program to surveil for neoplas cancers, to improve, include more people. We're doing about 10 a year, now we're doing 45, with complete body scans, looking for new cancers to address them early. We've bought extractors, like you talked, to clean the gear, to make sure that the chronic exposures are not happening after fires. We do post-fire decontamination. This is all in the last two years, two and a half, three years. We're in the process of buying dryers, so we can expedite that whole process. So, our plan is very, very aggressive to minimize the exposures and minimize the risk to responders. In the county, Boca Chones had those exhaust systems for about 25 years, and I was instrumental in getting them upgraded before I left that department. They were the only, at the time, the only department with those systems in the county. Palmesh County has probably one or two stations, they're just rolling it out over the last two years, because again, they're very expensive. Delray Beach has applied for a new system, it's called No Smoke, and that's placed on the unit itself. It's a different system altogether, and it's kind of a filter type of system to absorb the contaminants before they hit the outside. So, that's just another way of dealing with the same exhaust problem. Station 1, as you mentioned, we, it was part of design to put that system in place. We've, we wrote an $81,000 grant for Station 3 to, to do the, the dryers and the extractor for Station 3, the exhaust direct collect system, extractor for Station number 3. So, let's talk a little about the costs, and that's why we tend to, the manager and I had already discussed implementing that system throughout the department. In fact, she, when she heard about the system, she says, "It's a great idea, let's do it," and we decided to do it over a three-year program, because the cost again is significant. Not that cancer risk is not significant, but we have to manage the funding with the project we have on hand. Each station, for Station number 2, will cost $74,000 for that one station to get it done. Station 4 is another $60,000, and Station 5, because of the extra bays that we have, we have six bays in Station 5, which costs $115,000, $500, $115,500 to install the system. So, a total cost for those three stations of $250,000, plus we have to budget another $700, $7,500 per year for maintenance, because as you can imagine, we're connected to the fire truck or the rescue pulling out of station, then there some damage can occur, especially in, when they're new to the fire department. So, it is a significant impact to the budget, and I'm not saying that we should not do it. I'm not saying, but the plan that we had in place, I thought was a reasonable, timely plan for installing the system based on the cost and based on what we are already doing to minimize the risk to firefighters. But you give me direction, and we'll do what we can.
Well, chief, I appreciate everything you've done since you've been here as far as upgrading the equipment and everything, but it is a known fact that these diesel exhaust causes cancer. That's a known fact. And to think that maybe one or two of our firefighters could, could contract cancer in the next year or two years because of these fumes, I'd be very upsetting. I think, and like I said a little bit earlier, that we've had, we've got money in the CIP budget to do dugout roofs, to do, I believe, a couple hundred thousand to do a access road to the, to the golf course, a cart barn. We've got money in the tennis club maintenance. I think these are the monies, those are important projects. I, I agree with that. But I think those could be kicked down the road a little bit, maybe put off for that year, and those monies put towards this diesel exhaust collection system. I think if it saves one life, stops one case of cancer, I think it'd be well worth the $240, $50,000 that you mentioned. I think that everybody up here would, would have to agree with that.
Well, we, we know a lot of things cause cancer, well, not cause necessarily, but put you at higher risk for cancer. Smoking, we know about that. We know about obesity, we know about, all those things are, put you at higher risk for cancer. Exposure to the exhaust does put you at higher risk for cancer, and we're doing everything we can within the funding that we have to make that happen. And whatever direction you give me or give the manager, I mean, we're happy to do whatever you say.
I appreciate that, chief.
I wanna go next. Are you finished?
I'm finished with that.
All right. So, before you arrived here, we had another incident, but it wasn't the bays, it was inside the buildings. And one of them was Fire Station 1, where the exhaust fans were not working. So, not only have you also maintained to make sure that the inside the, the fire stations are free from cancer engines and that the, all the exhaust fans are working on the inside as well?
Yes, we are aggressively monitoring the entire, inside, the internal environment in fire stations. We're looking at everything we can to minimize any hazards that might increase the risk for health hazards in the fire station. So, we're, we're looking at every day. When we get a complaint, we're right, we're all over it.
And so, yeah, that's what I was, I went to Mission BBQ yesterday for the firefighters' night. They raised over $1,800 for the Firefighters Benevolent Association. You know, I understand that we, we have things in plans and that we have the, the grant here for this, and you know, I'm, you know, I'm fine with what you and the city manager decided to do it over a three-year process, you said?
That's correct.
And we currently have exhaust fans?
We have fans in the roof of the building, which have been the standard of care for many, many, many years. The new standard, evolving standard, is that the direct capture systems, which is what the plan event systems are gonna do. And most departments are migrating to that again because of the cost and the, what's involved, they're migrating that as budget permits. So, we're doing the best we can with the funding we have.
Okay. And so, we had, Laurie, you, okay, and then Commissioner McCray?
Thank you. Okay, chief, you talk faster than I do. Now, slow down.
Okay.
Over the three-year period, give me those figures again.
Three-year period. We have to do three stations. I'm gonna get my, my eyes back on.
Please, just slow down a little bit more. Okay.
Okay. So, Station 2 would cost about $74,500. Station 4, with three bays, would cost about $60,000. Station 5 has six bays that would cost $115,500. Maintenance costs annually for all those drops after they're installed is gonna run about $7,600 per year for the life of the system.
Per, per station, or just?
For the life, for all, for all the stations.
For all the stations.
All the stations, yeah.
All right, let me continue. Okay, now, and you're being in the fire department and going around, you know, the state of Florida, how many cases that Commissioner Casello is speaking of has been reported on a death certificate? On any kind of certificate?
I don't know. We could correlate diesel directly with a death.
Okay.
But we know that the particulates in diesel exhaust does put you at higher risk, just like smoking, obesity, and those kind of things, put you at higher risk for cancer.
Well, stop talking about obesity, forget that, everything else but that.
Well, I have to talk about it, to align myself.
So, you, so you a hazard to the city?
Whatever you say, sir.
But anyway, back on a serious note, I'm just saying, if we wait three years, we'd still be in good shape.
Well, we've been in the business for, since 1924, so I don't think three years is an unreasonable period to wait to install the systems. Personal opinion.
Okay, I'm not a firefighter, but this is what you and the city manager has said, you know, over three years, we can do this.
Right.
Okay.
The new EPA systems and the diesel engines are cleaning the exhaust even before we put the extractors on them. The new urea systems that all of our newer units have, when they come back to the station, the exhaust coming out is cleaner than what's coming into it. That's how effective and efficient those systems are.
Answered my question, thank you.
All right.
All right, Commissioner Casello?
Chief, how many runs do you do a year?
We run about 15,000 calls per year.
So, the trucks are in and out of station at least 15,000 times, in and out?
Every year.
Every year. And you've been aware that we had air quality issues with Stations 1 and 3, where mold actually grew in the stations, and we had to close down both those stations for a period of time. Air quality was not good.
That was right before I got there, due to moisture and leakage in the building and causing the mold, and, and we did the right thing, the city did, shutting down the stations, paying it up.
I'm not, I'm not debating that, but my point here is that the air quality in these stations are not what it should be. You're talking to me, you've got 15,000 times, these trucks are in and out of the stations. God, we stopped the firefighters from smoking or using any tobacco products because it's known to cause cancer. Diesel exhaust is known to cause cancer, and you're saying in front of me here, saying, "Well, we can wait three years before we finish this project up." I'm asking this commission, I'm asking our city manager to find the funds to expedite this. Do we need new roofs on dugouts? Do we need to put a new cart barn in and a golf course, or do we have to repave a tennis club parking lot with $100,000? There's money in the budget to expedite these, and those other CIP projects can be pushed off a little bit. I think this is the most, one of the most important things that we can do for our first responders here. It's, it's proven, it's a fact, it's, it's not, you know, made up, so...
Sir, I, I don't disagree with anything you just said.
Thank you.
And I'm not saying that, I think, but what I'm saying- And I'm not saying that, I think, but what I'm saying is this, I said, the plan we have is a good plan. If you want to expedite the plan, we will follow your, follow your direction.
Chief, let me ask you this, if the money could be found in this year's budget to expedite those collection systems, would you be in favor of that?
If you give me the money, I'll follow your direction.
Thank you.
Commissioner Katz?
Yeah, for, um, for city staff, what was the cost of that? I do remember the, like, the pathway or the driveway for the golf course. What was the allocation for that in the capital budget currently?
Tim Howard, we have, uh, two hundred thousand dollars in next year's, this upcoming year's CIP for the pathway. Or the, or the entry road?
This is the road from Jog to the, the golf course clubhouse.
Correct.
Okay. I mean, um, I have no problem taking that money and reallocating it personally. It's a facility outside of the city limits. Um, it's, it's property we don't own. So for what it's worth, if we invest in that road and who knows what happens two or five years down the line, it's the county's road essentially. Um, so I mean, I'd, I'd be supportive of moving the, the golf course funds. I wouldn't, even though we've discussed in the past, the, the tennis courts, I think that I'd like to see a lot more data on usage and costs and things like that before I go and, and eliminate funding for that. But, uh, the golf course pathway in particular, I think that we've done not, a lot to improve the actual golf course, the facility. I don't know if the roadway in is necessarily something that people are dissuaded from using our golf course because they have to drive down a, an entranceway that hasn't been, you know, repaved recently. So, and I'd be more than willing to do that. That's still, you know, a fifty thousand dollar shortfall, but, um, that's a start.
So I guess I'll, you know, entertain a motion. Um, yes?
Chief, I just need to clarify around something. You said seventy-five thousand in annual maintenance fees or seven point five thousand?
Seven point five thousand.
And that's for all stations overall?
All the stations, if we're there, if the project's fully implemented.
Okay. And then the projects you mentioned, that there's a three-year timeline, is that in three years, all of these stations will have it? Or over three years, each station will be getting one o, each year, ultimately for them to all be?
Well, the, what we talked about with the city manager was doing one station per year.
So one station per year will be getting?
So on the funding, putting the budget, we'll begin the process of installing them.
So one station per year will be getting these exhaust systems until the third year when?
That's what we discussed with the, the city manager.
So it's not that we have to wait three years to get everything done. In three years, everything will be done?
Right. At the end of the third year, all the stations will be?
Everything will be done. Okay. Thank you for that clarification, Chief.
So, entertain a motion to ask the city manager to find, um, uh, items that may be able to push off for next, uh, budget cycle to pay for the three new plants this year, or three new systems this year.
I second that motion.
Oh, no, I'm asking, so you're...
Oh.
I'm not...
I thought you just made a motion.
No, I'm entertaining that motion that you're...
My motion would be to give the city manager direction to find money in the capital improvement budget, uh, on projects that could potentially be put off one year that are not as important in my opinion as the safety and health of our first responders. That's all I'm asking. Uh, and those, uh, ideas I gave you as far as dugouts and paving and roads and all that, I think these are, you know, important things, believe me. I, I believe in them. But I think that money can be well spent in this year's budget and protecting our first responders. And I would ask the city manager to come up with some, uh, options, uh, to fund what we need to do to get these three stations up and running. That, that's my motion.
All right. Yes, Commissioner Katz?
I'd, uh, request a, a friendly amendment to the motion to specifically identify the golf course roadway as the two hundred thousand dollars and then to direct the city manager to find the additional fifty thousand.
All right.
I'll second that motion.
Is there any further discussion? Saying none. All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
Nay. Motion fails three to two. Moving on to item B, mayor requests to discuss potential environmental regulations pertaining to the use of straws and polystyrene, styrofoam within the city. Um, I've had discussion with our sustainability coordinator, Rebecca Harvey, and that we are preempted for certain rules regarding styrofoam and, um, plastic straws. Um, I did speak with Con a little bit and I would like to, um, move forward with a green business program that the city of Boynton Beach offers. So rather than trying to ban these items, we are going to hopefully provide certain incentives for businesses to go green. Um, something that I would come up with is, you know, reduce costs, a reduction rate for recyclables for commercial buildings, or maybe a reduction rate on their trash, which they'll already have because hopefully they'll be reducing that. And so that is kind of where I'm asking the, the board's direction to move forward with a green business program for, uh, our businesses.
This is only for businesses, right?
Correct.
Okay, the person who's in charge of this, can she bring something back to us? I, I'm just saying before, let me read it before I go for it because I'm just saying, I know that the airlines, that they go into bamboo straws and all that other stuff. I'm just saying anybody here can help me out, address anything, you know, y'all have something in place?
So no, this is just moving forward with...
Forward, okay.
For us to develop a program.
To develop a program.
We will bring something back if it's the commission's.
Okay.
Yes, uh, vice mayor, then Commissioner Katz?
Perhaps one of the things that we can also do, I know we provide our, our economic development grants. So maybe, uh, encouraging businesses to move in this direction and be more green, environmentally friendly, uh, could be a, uh, maybe a stipulation or requirement of, um, one of these grants that we, that we use in the city. So maybe that's just an idea to add to the language to help, um, initiate this and really get people on board.
And Commissioner Katz?
I know it only applied to, I'm sorry, I know it only, would only apply to new businesses, but perhaps for, uh, businesses that are doing remodels or, or things like that, that could also help them too.
Yes.
Um, yeah, I'd, I'd want to see some, you know, statistical analysis if we were to offer incentives, if it was not necessarily in favor of a grant program because I don't think, uh, I don't think taxpayers should be paying businesses to, you know, do socially responsible things necessarily when the cost increase could be minimal. That's, I'd like to see analysis of, you know, alternatives to whether it's plastic straws or styrofoam or whatever, you know, what is the impact on a business? And if it's marginal for the average business, then I'd see no problem in trying to, to implement some sort of local policy. If, um, you know, if it's an exorbitant cost, then we could go down a route of, of discounts or things like that for recycling. But, um, I'd be weary that we need to make sure that the cost benefit analysis there makes sense if, if, you know, a lot of businesses signed on to do this and that's great for the environment, but if it were to zap a significant amount of money from city revenues from, you know, from trash or recycling, then, you know, I want to hit some sort of proper equilibrium between trying to do what's right for the environment and doing what's right by the, you know, by the residents. So I'd like to see, you know, a good deal more information. I also, um, am thinking about this because obviously it's, you know, it's been a pretty popular subject in the media and amongst, uh, local governments recently. I think that if, if we were to design some sort of program or come up with some sort of prohibition on certain types of products, that it would need to be comprehensive. I think that, in my personal opinion, and, you know, this might ruffle some people's emotions, but I think that a lot of people saw a picture of a sea turtle with the straw in its nose and all of a sudden now straws have become like the only thing people talk about. But in reality, if we're having a serious conversation about getting rid of plastic products that damage the environment, to do the straws is kind of just some token fad thing. If you want to meaningfully address environmental concerns with regards to disposable or single-use plastics, I think that you might as well go the full way and look at it in a comprehensive manner. I think the, the fixation on straws in society right now is the byproduct of emotions generated from a photo of a turtle when there's plenty of other animals and environmental impacts that, you know, are far greater than just one turtle. So I'd like to see a comprehensive plan versus just ban plastic straws or, or ban this one product. Um, you know, if we're going to do something, it should be meaningful, it shouldn't just be kind of superficial, in my opinion.
So I guess just...
I support moving forward.
Yeah, it's a, I guess, Rebecca, do you, you know, would you mind coming up here? And I don't know if the rest of the commission has a chance to have a meeting with her, you know, to share your ideas on, maybe on one-on-one basis to help with the green business program. Um, but, you know, did you get enough of comments from us to start with the green business program?
Yes. Hi, Rebecca Harvey, good evening. Um, that, yeah, the comments were helpful. Just to clarify one thing, you, you mentioned preemption at the beginning. The state of Florida preempts municipalities from banning plastic, single-use plastic bags currently, but that law is being char, uh, challenged in court by the city of Coral Gables. So we're monitoring what happens with that lawsuit. It's been appealed. And so if that, um, rules, you know, it results in a change to the state law, then we would no longer be preempted from regulating plastic bags. There's also a, um, law that preempts municipalities from regulating styrofoam, uh, citywide, but there's nothing that, uh, prevents us from changing our own contracts. So that is an option that we could at least start as far as styrofoam with, um, amending city contracts for special event permities and all contractors to not use those products. Um, and then the green business program, we've, um, I've actually already been working with John Dergan, really took the initiative on that in economic development, and we have a draft of it that I'm reviewing with Colin. We're going to make some more amendments and we'll be ready to share that with you. But the idea there is that it's voluntary, it's positive, it's, gives them positive recognition and a decal in their window and all of that good stuff and a financial incentive, hopefully. Um, many of the act, the actions are optional. They would have to do a certain number of actions in, uh, reducing, uh, water use, energy use, solid waste, transportation. But for restaurants, we could, uh, make certain things required like no straws, just to address that issue, to, to get the recognition, no straws, maybe no styrofoam, um, things like that. So there's a lot of ways we could go with it. And I'd be happy to share a draft with you, uh, pretty soon when we have it ready.
Commissioner Casello?
Aren't there a lot of, uh, companies and businesses already doing that on their own as far as getting rid of straws and styrofoam?
Some are. I don't know that I'd say a lot. I mean, I think it is a big issue right now and there's, there's movement.
Would that impose a, a cost on a small business or a business to, to change over to a more expensive, uh, container or, or a drinking straw? That would, that would put a burden on the, on the businesses, correct?
Well, I, I agree with Commissioner Katz's, um, request and I'll look into it more. I don't know the specific numbers, but I would, I would look, like to, uh, provide that analysis and some of those numbers for you all to see.
Bye. Okay, we, yep. So we have, uh, yep, consent to move forward. Thank you. Um, my item that I put on for, uh, this is, uh, discuss the potential use of campaign contribution statement, um, with the, the copy attached with the, the agenda. While reviewing the, at the South Central Regional Waste Water Treatment Board, I saw this, um, come up and I thought that this is something that I think we need to have in the city of Boynton Beach, not only for the city, but with the CRA. So that if anyone is doing business with the city or CRA, that they make a disclosure whether they have contributed to the campaigns of, uh, the commissioners or the mayor. Um, I feel that this is kind of in the opinion of public disclosure because even though we announce, um, who has made public, uh, contributions and it's on the clerk's webpage, this will give, um, you know, the people who are there at the meetings who don't have that opportunity know that money has been given, uh, to the campaign. Um, you know, this is also in response to the, the Twelfth Amendment of the Constitutional Revision Commission. Um, I don't know if anybody here has also seen that, but that is where all, you know, elected officials are prohibited from lobbying, um, for six years after their term is over or prohibiting them from lobbying while they're in office. Um, you know, it's, it's something that we hold in, of the public's trust to be up here as elected officials. And I think anything that we can do to make sure that we are, that they can trust us is something that we should move forward with. And so I'm asking, um, the commission to help, uh, to move forward with, um, having this campaign contribution statement when we are dealing with, uh, new businesses for both the city and the CRA. Yes, Commissioner Casello?
Oh, I think in form of transparency, I think that we, we disclose that in the beginning. It's on a lot of campaign forms that we fill out, uh, on a monthly basis. So, uh, I just think it's another, uh, layer of paper that, uh, really doesn't serve any purpose if we're all being honest and transparent when we disclose what we're supposed to be disclosing.
Well, I mean, I'd love for all the state legislators to know what they're doing for all the disclosures for each person that gives them money or pack money, so...
The list would be long.
Yeah. So that's why I'm trying to start that here. And so, correct, if the, the commission feels that that's an extra piece of paperwork that, you know, the public doesn't need to know when there's a hearing on, uh, or an item on that, whether the person has given money to the campaign, then, well, it can be dropped and we'll move on. Yes. Commissioner Katz, then McCray.
Um, couldn't I guess simple solution be that we just include the most recent campaign contribution reports, like from the, the most recent cycle for any elected official? That way those reports are just in the backup as a course of action other than, than having to remember who exactly gave you this or that or if, for instance...
This is not on the, the, uh, us, it's on the, the people who are...
I thought one of them said we had to and one of them said they had to on the form.
No, this form is for, I believe...
Like, uh, section A, under the, the example from Lake Worth, that we have an elected official from the city who is currently sitting as a member on the city commission and has accepted an election campaign contribution in the amount of excess of a hundred dollars, um, must publicly disclose both verbally and in writing. So there's, there's two provisions, or, you know, I'm not a lawyer, so correct my verbiage, but there's two clauses here. One is that we as individuals would have to actively monitor agenda items and ensure that we disclosed contributions. And then section B, um, or clause B or whatever, um, is the part where any vendor or business coming before us for, for any item would have to disclose that they gave us money. So it, correct me if I'm wrong, if the way I'm reading it, but it looks like we, each party would have to potentially monitor and submit disclosures both ways.
Correct. And so if you would want to just take out the elected official, because we have to require it already to do it in writing, you know, and just have it for any applicant coming before, whether they have given money to a commissioner for an item in front of the city or the CRA for disclosure purposes.
I have no problem with that. I think that's, that's simpler. I think that it, it puts a burden on us to try to think if, for instance, Bradley Miller, who represents potentially dozens of items a year, comes before us, do I have to put, you know, Bradley Miller donated a hundred, contributed a hundred dollars to my campaign for, for everything he does? Or I would personally like to put the responsibility, if we were to choose this, on the, the parties coming before us more than us because we file our finance reports and those are public and on the site. So if it, if it's limited to businesses, um, you know, that have contributed and they just disclose it at the time that they come before us, I don't have a problem with that. I will say though, that in the, in the spirit of, uh, the intent of this, that I think that the discussion that we, we broached before about, um, you know, members of advisory boards and, and prohibiting lobbying from members of advisory boards, I think that goes hand in hand with the spirit of what we're talking about, that anyone who serves on any committee, elected or appointed, um, you know, avoids any conflict of interest or direct conflict. So I think that if, if we were to move in this direction, that it would be difficult for anyone to agree to this but disagree with that. So I think that I welcome, uh, I welcome any form of, of greater transparency, um, and all forms.
And, uh, Commissioner McCray?
Thank you. I, I'm going to agree with Commissioner Casello.
Thank you. I'm going to agree with Commissioner Casello. We already have this in place. I'm just saying when we have, we start our meetings, we said, is there any disclosures? We do that. Okay, Palm Beach County Ethics Committee and all that stuff, they tell us to look at what we're doing too. And I think we already have something in place. It's just another avenue for more paperwork. I'm not in favor of this.
Yes, Commissioner Casello, then Vice Mayor.
I would just question, how do we monitor that when a, an applicant comes before us? Is, how would they know or how do we get that message out to them? Or is it part of, how does it all play into coming for us?
For example, any sort of contract that the city has, we require them to have a drug-free workplace. That's kind of the similar paperwork that would be associated with this. The other thing is, is that when we have people applying for major site plans, that would also be a part of that. So any sort of building permit.
So, just to be clear, so the Millers, the Miskels, the Winers, the people who come before us with site plans, with projects in our city, would have to disclose in a form of some sort, saying that they gave X amount of dollars to each one of our campaigns or whatever?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, Vice Mayor.
What's the...
Into the microphone.
What's the repercussion, I would, from what I understand, if a person or an entity would come before us, but perhaps having forgotten to do this or didn't do this or chose not to do this? I don't know. But what would be the repercussion for that? Is there some type of backlash that they would have to expect if they didn't choose to do this form or perhaps just forgot because it's a new protocol that we're now starting, that we're considering doing for the future?
So underneath the signature page, you see that any false or inaccurate statement will result in the rejection of the bid proposal submittal or the immediate termination of any resulting agreement with the city of Lake Worth. So that, you know, if they tried to, if they failed to disclose, then whatever they're trying to obtain may be terminated after there it is found out that they did give campaign disclosures and did not disclose that to the people. And going to what Commissioner Katz says, you know, I agree. I think it's almost in the senses that not only should we, you know, ban advisory board members from trying to lobby the city, we should also ban ourselves from trying to lobby the city for at least two years. I know the amendment says six years, but, you know, just putting ourselves in the right direction beforehand. Commissioner McCray?
Yes, summing it up, with this layer of paperwork, you're going to put it out to individuals who want to contribute to anybody, campaign, and want to do business in point. And this is going to be another layer saying, hold it, put my hands up, I don't want to do this. We have something already in place. What's in place now is working, leave it alone. This is your idea, but I don't go along with this one.
Commissioner Katz and Casello.
Just another, another concern or thought that I had in reviewing this was, so this, as I'm reading it, refers only exclusively to contributions to candidates' campaigns, individual campaigns. What about if, you know, an entity contributed to a PAC that supported a candidate that wasn't affiliated with that candidate? How would you, how would we be able to close that loophole so that if somebody started a PAC to support my campaign and then they were giving contributions and spending on me, it's not a direct contribution to me, but it was a deliberate contribution in supporting me, but it doesn't have to be disclosed on this because this isn't the federal campaign contributions. So that was something in, in reading this that I, I thought that there's kind of a giant loophole that could easily be navigated.
Oh, there's multiple loopholes with campaign contribution system. It's like, oh, you could give it to your spouse and, you know, that would be okay if they made, the spouse made the campaign contribution. I'm not saying that this is, this is kind of like public disclosure, that, you know, for example, the, the people who are lobbyists that give to our campaigns, it's, I think it's, it's known that if they are representing someone and they're the applicant and/or the, the agent of the applicant to make note to the public that, you know, they gave someone the campaign contribution. And this is not to say that if we receive a campaign contribution, we're going to always go in favor somewhat who gave us that campaign contribution because if we go in that way, it's not, it's not a good idea. It's just that public's disclosure that we know that there's, that they think that we're doing the right thing. And that's, that's kind of it. So, like I said, if you, the board here doesn't feel that this is a necessary or a positive piece of legislation that we can do for ourselves, then we can move on.
I just like to, one more comment, you know, saying what, adding to what Commissioner Katz had mentioned, you know, with PACs and LLCs and, you know, third-party contributions. I think that, you know, we all sit up here, we take an oath when we take this office. And it's incumbent upon us to be ethically and morally transparent to the voters. I think that, that falls on us. So if we fail to do that, then we should pay the heavy dividend fine. I think, you know, just to be hard to monitor and keep track of for those same reasons we just mentioned.
So, you know, I'm in favor of this. Is there anyone else on the board who would like to move forward with this?
I could entertain looking into it. I'd want to speak to, this is an active ordinance in the city of Lake Worth. I wouldn't mind reaching out to someone from their commission and just picking their brain about, you know, the, the normal kind of week to week, is this something that, you know, they think is beneficial or it's just something that's become a process? Again, I could, I could see supporting something along these lines, but I think it would, you know, would need to be reworked and in a more efficient manner. And also I'd like to speak to people who have lived through it to, to gain their, their insight on it.
Okay. Vice Mayor?
I would just like to ask our city attorney, just to weigh in on this. I know you're the one who found the ordinance on request by mayor, but in regards to what we already have on ordinance here in the city, do you feel that this is another step, that's a necessary step in order to help achieve transparency or whatever it may be that this document seems to want to allude to?
I'm going to limit my comment to indicating that if adopted, I believe it would be legal. How it ties in with other, whether it adds to or subtracts some, from or supplements other ordinances, I think the comment on that really puts me in the position of being the sixth member of the commission tonight.
Yes, Mayor. Would you like to move forward with the discussion on this in the future or no?
I, I have issues of how this item, agenda item came on the agenda. I think we'll talk about that on a later agenda item. But in regards to the actual substance of the agenda item, I would be okay with continuing the conversation. I do feel that there is a certain level of overlap perhaps that this ordinance would cause, but I'm, I'm willing to at least entertain hearing, for example, Commissioner Katz says, what some other members of the Lake Worth commission may feel about it and how effective they feel that has helped their commission be and see where we can go from there. I'm all about being transparent and all about helping to move our city forward and make sure that our residents have full faith in our board and our leadership.
So we'll put this on a future agenda item to discuss, hopefully in the first meeting in October. All right, thank you.
And just to, if it's the appropriate time, to the, the point that the Vice Mayor just made, I too, just for our own clarification or for staff's clarification with regards to the process for placing elected official requested items on there. Just to clarify, my, my understanding was that any elected official would have to gain consent at one of these meetings, but I guess there was some mixed interpretation about that. Could we get clarification? Because I thought that any item that we placed on there had to get consent and you could choose if the, if the board consented to placing an item to put it on the new business for the next meeting or put it on the future agenda items that could come up at, you know, at a time when, when the information's been gathered or the item's ready. But I wasn't under the impression that, that anyone could unilaterally place something on there without the, the board having approved of it through consent at a previous meeting.
I guess, Jim, regarding the Robert rules of procedure, I know that the mayor can add an item onto the agenda, if I'm not mistaken.
Mayor, I don't agree with that. The rules do provide for that. I think the commission establishes the process for building the agenda.
Okay.
That certainly has been the custom and practice here for as long as I could remember. And it takes the consensus of the commission to add an item to the agenda for action.
Yeah.
It may get on there first for discussion, but that discussion must end with a consensus to put it on for action.
And so I think that's where I understood it as well, that, you know, we're not trying to have a first reading on this piece of, on the, for what we're talking about regarding the campaign contributions. And so that it's just a discussion. And so I would want anybody here on the commission be able to put an item on, you know, unilaterally for discussion, not necessarily for action. And so if you want to change it for discussion that we all have to agree beforehand, then that's fine as well. Yes, Commissioner McCray?
Thank you. Let's keep it the way we have it. Let's change it so that we will all have to agree like we did before. I am under the same interpretation that Commissioner Katz said and probably Vice Mayor Romulus. And I'm, I'm just saying, I got blindsided by this too. I'm just saying, we are a body, we act as a body, and information needs to come before us and we act on that at one time. This is what was stated to us that night. And then this guy throw it on us. I'm not in favor of how I got put on there either.
Okay.
My opinion is that any commission who sits up here as an elected official should have the opportunity to put things on future agenda. Where they go from the future agenda is another discussion we can have. But I, I don't think we need consensus to put something on a future agenda for discussion, whether it moves forward or not.
No, this is for new business, not future agenda.
I thought, I thought, was my understanding, things had to be put on future agenda before it could be put up, discussed, then to put on the agenda.
If we want to have a discussion on an item, at any time, we could always put it on the agenda, have that discussion of the item.
Doesn't have to go through future agenda items?
No.
I stand corrected.
Commissioner Katz?
So I would recommend if, you know, based on what I thought the process was that, and past practice, at least since we've been up here for two years, I don't think anyone's ever been rejected in their, in their efforts to put something on there as new business. You know, certainly when it's discussed and might lead to action, you know, then it's whatever anyone feels for or against it. But I think everyone's pretty, you know, accommodating up here, that as long as it's, it's asked for at a, at a previous meeting. And you could specifically say, I'd like to discuss this at next meeting, so it would be new business, or you could say in the future, future agenda items. And then you would have the right, if it's on future agenda items by consent, you could choose to, to get staff to bring it forward at the time, see fit. So again, I don't, I don't see myself unless it was something outlandish, saying I don't want to discuss it, even if I intended to oppose it once it was discussed. I think that's, that's the collegiality we've shown up here so far.
Sounds good. All right, moving on to, Vice Mayor and then City Manager.
I'm mistaken, but was there an agenda item that said that we were going to be discussing the policy of how things get added to the agenda? Was that removed?
No, there was no discussion item. I have, and that's what I was, I have the language, we had it, that discussion in the last meeting. And I just want to read that language and see if that's what...
Okay.
I think that's what everyone's looking to do and then we know we've got it forward. So as I had stated, a policy does not exist, but a past practice has been established. So if a commissioner desires to bring an item before the city commission for discussion or consideration, said commissioner should raise the matter at a commission meeting and request the topic be placed on either the next agenda or a future agenda. Typically, there is a consensus by the commission to place that matter before the commission and a future or the next agenda. So I'll fix that language at the end. And then that ensures that nobody's getting caught by surprise.
Okay. Sounds good.
Just another inquiry at this moment. Didn't, didn't we say at the last meeting, or is this still going to take some time, that we were planning to discuss the, the potential appointment for the future vacated seat in District Four? So will that...
Yes, Jim and I had that discussion. He's...
Will that be on the next one so that we can get the ball rolling on that?
Well, it'll be on future agenda.
Could it be placed by consent on new business for the next meeting?
Oh, sure, by consensus.
By consensus.
Because I think the, if they're prepared to, you know...
So let me be clear, that is to discuss the procedures that you're going to follow.
Yeah.
Now, remember, the procedure is set for, already set forth in the charter and code, which is when the vacancy occurs, it is announced that there is a vacancy. And then the meeting after that, the commission has the opportunity to appoint somebody to fill that vacancy.
Okay.
So really, the only piece that's missing is if you wanted to announce ahead of time that you were seeking individuals interested in being appointed at that first meeting, you could get out a little bit ahead on that. But other than that, the process is already described in the code.
Yeah. At, at least for me, I think that if we know the seat's going to be vacated at a date specific, it wouldn't be a bad thing for us to be prepared shortly thereafter, you know, almost immediately to, to have a list of applicants turned in, since we know for sure it's not, you know, somebody resigning for some odd reason or being removed. It's, you know, Commissioner Casello's date for resignation is set in stone. So I wouldn't, I wouldn't be opposed to engaging the public or at least getting it out there as soon as possible to the public that there, there will be this vacancy and that way people can start to entertain their desires.
So the next agenda would have under new business discussion and action regarding process for announcing vacancy, future vacancy?
If, if consent.
Jim, just, just real quick. So obviously the seat that's being vacated, that individual has no say on who's, who would be picked or chosen to replace him?
Oh, you won't be on the, you won't be on the commission here.
They can't decide before that.
Yeah. You, you could discuss upfront whether there should be individual mailers sent out or just published in the newspaper, but, you know, there's going to be the vacancy. But you can't participate in the process beyond, beyond your term.
Okay, moving forward on to 12A, which is proposed ordinance number 18-22, first reading approve, amending city code of ordinance section 16-22 so that park rangers to have the same authority as the director and any park attendant to eject from the park or beach any person acting in violation of this article.
Motion to approve.
Well, it skipped a little bit, so let me read the title in full.
Yeah.
Because that's an abbreviation of it. It's ordinance 18022, an ordinance of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida, amending Part II Code of Ordinance, Chapter 16, Parks and Recreation, amending Section 1622, enforcement of regulations so that the park rangers have the same authority as the director to eject from the park or beach any person acting in violation of this article, providing for conflict severability, codification, and an effective date. Right?
A discussion.
Have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Yes.
Thank you. I think that word eject, I don't like that, remove is better. I'm just saying, when I hear the word eject means like you're going to get somebody and yank them, you know, and remove is better. Remove instead of eject. That's my concern.
If the commission agrees with that in the amendment, we'll make that change.
I hope so, because I want nobody ejecting me from anywhere, okay?
Tonight on first reading and then it'll appear as that in the second reading.
Yes, Commissioner, Vice Mayor, I'm sorry.
Perhaps I'm overthinking this, but have we done things such as racial bias trainings with our employees? That way we're not perhaps doing things that could turn into a Starbucks situation, especially if we're talking about ejecting people from places? This would be a question for our city manager. Are we thinking about doing things like that in the future? Because I would hate for us to be in a situation that lands us in hot water.
That would be very important to do that. We don't now because they don't have the authority, really. I mean, Wally's the only one with the authority to pull anybody out other than our police department.
And so that leads to the question of if we're going to give the authority to these individuals, they should have that training to understand what constitutes whatever behavior that may cause for somebody to be ejected or removed from a position or location. What would Wally like to comment?
No, we will absolutely do that. I think that's imperative and provide that training.
And I'm sorry, it's just a little difficult to hear.
Bias, like implicit bias training for employees that are in, have the authority or the power to remove someone from a facility, to have been trained on that. So they're, you know...
Of course, of course.
And right now, I don't think we have employees that really have that power to do that. So we haven't done that training. But, I mean, our police department has, every police officer has, you know, through the implicit bias training. But it's something I think we would absolutely need to do with our park rangers and... Yeah, I think it's a great idea. It's important.
Absolutely.
Yes, Commissioner McCray?
Change my motion. A motion to approve with the intent that we will use biased racial training and that the consent of this commission will get rid of the word reject and put the word remove in.
I guess my question is for the, the term remove, you know, they can only ask them to remove, they can't physically, and so in order to physically remove the police, which if it was on the beach, we would have to call Ocean Ridge, if I'm not mistaken? So that only the park ranger has the authority to call the, the local authorities to have someone removed?
How about initiate the removal of...
Well, that's better. I'm, I'm just saying, you know, initiate it, you know, but this word eject, I'm already talking about racial bias training. Okay, Afro-American, that's what I am, okay? And you come to me, you go eject me from somewhere, you go have some problems. You know, you can ask me to, you go to remove me and I would say, I would be happy to leave.
Okay, so is that, I agree with the commission...
What he said was right.
With the removal. And so once that, kind of similar to a flight attendant, if they want someone to remove from the plane, they have that authority to ask that person to leave. However, we don't, they don't have the authority physically to do anything. So...
So... Once the plane lands.
That's right. You eject in the air, you know.
So may I have a motion to move, to, motion to pass as amended? So, all right, any further discussion? Saying none, may have a roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Romulus?
Yes.
Commissioner Casello?
Yes.
Mayor Grant?
Yes.
Commissioner Katz?
Yeah.
And Commissioner McCray?
Yes. Yes.
The vote is five to zero.
Next item was the proposed ordinance number 18-019. Jim has a letter been sent out to the commission on ethics.
I have a meeting scheduled next week with the executive director and their chief legal counsel, so I would request that B, and while we're at it, D and E be left on the table.
So you're saying B, D and E?
D and E are also noted as staff recommendation to keep on the table.
So item C?
You want that too? It doesn't, C is not noted that way, but leave C on the table?
If C is not on the table, we would need a motion to table item C.
Second.
Well, we need a first.
So moved.
Thank you. All right, all those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes unanimously. We'll do it until staff recommends to not have it on the table.
We're going to do that at the same time we do the rate resolution, so it'll be the same E.
Moving on to item F.
Ordinance 18021, an ordinance of the City of Boynton Beach, Florida, amending Chapter 10 of the city's Code of Ordinances, garbage, trash and offensive conditions, Article 2 Refuge, garbage and trash, Section 1030, rates and charges for city services allowing the solid waste rate increase providing for conflict severability codification and an effective date.
May I have a motion to approve? Do I have a second?
Thank you.
Question?
Yes, please.
Thank you. Mr. Suss came before us and was talking about the mileage rate and I, that's why I wasn't in favor of going up to the eight percent, okay? Seven point nine is fine. Okay, when you're dealing with individuals where you're asking them to go and pay another dollar for another month and everything when they live in District 2, they're talking about the, the regularity of picking up trash in District 2, but lately you all have been doing an excellent job because you've been at about seven o'clock or seven thirty at my house, my home. And my take is that I don't want you all to start as just to say, well, let's do a good job until we get this passed and after this passed and we can go back and get it in our likes of Daisy Place. This is one thing I'm going to say. The second thing is that in District 2, we have a lot of vacant properties over there and we have a lot of illegal dumping and I'm just saying for me to see individuals pass by, don't pick trash up, you know, whether it's on my property, your property, it makes District 2 looks bad and I'm kind of tired of like calling, saying there's something on the corner, did anybody see this? Can somebody come and pick this up? You know, I need more help.
Just to clarify, if it's, if it's on the street or the sidewalk, we have the authority to do it, but if it's on private property, we legally are not entitled to enter said property? Is that the explanation that's being offered?
It goes through a different process.
Okay.
If it's, if it's illegal dumping on private property, the private property owner, owner is notified. Now, if there's, there's a point in time, if they don't remove it, we have a system to take care of it. But on the public right of way, it, we do, we, it is our responsibility to remove it.
Yes, Commissioner McCray?
Thank you. Commissioner Katz, I understood what you said, but I'm talking about illegal dumping on property where nobody's taking care of the property itself and then I know it goes through a process. The process takes sometime two to three months and we have to look at this garbage there and the same time that we're waiting on them to pick it up, sir, they're throwing more trash on there, they think it's a place that we can dump. I understand your concern, that's been all of our concerns over there. I'm just saying, you know, you notify the property owners, well, I didn't put it there, then what do I have to do? If the police see them doing it, then they could say, you know, you're doing illegal dumping all for a ticket or something. I'm, I'm just saying, this is a problem that we had in District 2 from day one and we still have, we have more vacant property in District 2 probably than any other district here in the city. And I'm talking about illegal dumping. I understand the process when you take it before code or whatever you want to call it, they're saying, well, I didn't do it. And we still got to look at it as citizens of District 2. This is what I'm saying, you know, what can we do to alleviate this illegal dumping? Well, we have to look at what somebody else is coming from some other place in Boynton, other place in Delray or Lake Worth and dumping over in our city in District 2 of vacant property. This is what I'm saying.
You know, it's, I believe it's a crime, somebody does that, and so the only thing we can do is get the license plate. That's, you know, it's, you know, it's a property crime and so it's, no one's really getting hurt and so it's not a high level for our police, but, you know, we will definitely let the, the chief know that that is something of our concern of the illegal dumping that is going on in District 2.
Other question, the license plate readers that we were discussing, are they in place now?
I have not gotten confirmation that they are, but that's not on this item, so.
Sir, it's not on the item, but go what I'm saying, if they're doing illegal dumping and we have the license plate readers in place and they see them doing this and they got something to say, oh, you were the one doing it. I'm just saying, I know it's not on this item, that's why I'm asking the question. Are the license plate readers in place? I'm just saying, we need every avenue we can to help catch who's doing this illegal dumping. It's either a yes or no, the license plate readers are in. I know it's not on this here, we're going to vote to increase solid waste, that's, I know what the item is, but I'm trying to make sure that I'm getting clarifications of when they start calling me tonight, you all went up on garbage, another one dollar, and what about all this stuff that they're doing? I have to answer to these people, Mary, they don't call you like they called me. You see them only in the streets.
I, I understand that.
We have mobile units that are, are being utilized currently, two or three of them, I believe, the CRA bought one, the license plate readers that are being installed by ATS. I do not believe they are in yet and I think that's going to be 15 readers. I don't know if the chief's, oh, you are here, I'm sorry, come on in, chief.
Michael Gregory, Police Chief. No, they aren't installed yet or operational.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yes, Commissioner Katz?
I think to Commissioner McCray's concerns, I think the best advice to give residents is if they see it happening to report it to the police and if they have, you know, home surveillance cameras outside of their property that capture this to, to report it. I know that the license plate readers will be at, you know, main intersections, so they certainly won't be on residential, you know, side streets to be able to kind of capture the act. So it's imperative that people, if they see something, report it and then we can, at that point maybe, if they say they saw, you know, a red BMW or something like that do it, then we could look at the license plate reader, but I think people being proactive and neighborhood policing would be, it needs to be explained to them that we, we need them to help us because police officers aren't driving around monitoring for, for trash.
All right, any further discussion on item F? Saying none, may have a roll call, please.
Casello?
Yes.
Mayor Grant?
Yes.
Commissioner Katz?
Yeah.
Vice Mayor, Commissioner McCray?
Yes.
And Vice Mayor Romulus?
Aye.
Five to zero.
Thank you. And Jim, item G?
Yes, Mayor. At the August 7th meeting, the city commission adopted and approved an agreement with the Palm Beach County School District, an agreement for security services where City of Boynton Beach Police Officers would provide security details at the schools. The district has requested that the city add to that agreement, an addendum, which is a student information disclosure form which binds the city to already existing state statutes and federal regulations about maintaining the confidentiality of student records that come in their, into their possession. Since that addendum was not attached to your approval, it follows up and we're requesting that you approve that addendum, which simply does what is already the law.
Second.
Any further discussion? Saying none, all those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, motion passes unanimously.
Yeah, I'd like to make one comment in regards to our police at the schools. I'd like to tell you all, thank you for putting your cars out front. I think that's a deterrent. I like that. I even like when I pass by, I see them, I know if you're working or not, thank you.
All right, is anybody would like to put something on the future agenda item? Yes, Commissioner, Vice Mayor?
Yes, had a conversation with Susan Oyer and I believe all of us were copied on the email that she sent. I'd like to just get some feedback from staff under future agenda item, to add under future agenda item. I'd like to just get some staff feedback on the possibility of her idea that she mentioned